So why don't we? Just call the meeting to order at five oh four P M. And open the meeting, I guess, because I'm just running my mouth. I'm sort of sharing the meeting by default. So we're going to turn to the A and R. So. Tim and company, who's gonna? It looks like, I guess, will share the electronic plan that you've sent us. And I have it. Sarah, you've given me screen sharing.
Yes.
Permission. Let me make sure I can bring this up. Bring it up. Give me one second, folks, to just bring it up in a. Normal. PDF reader. And then share my screen. Okay. And so typically. It was Tim John and. Tim Nurse John place. And yeah, give us your name clearly on.
Okay, I'll try now. Rachel Monette.
How would you spell that last name, please?
M O N E T T E.
Okay, so we can capture that in the minutes. Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share the electronic copy that you sent. I can expand it, contract it, do whatever you want me to do, but normally we have the applicants. And if tell us their story first and then followed by word questions.
Okay, well. We, because Mary own. Own the house lot as far as the. And and. With a connection to the farm and with now Mary having dementia is not. Able to be involved. We're just trying to get the clean up. The boundary lines of this. As requested by the bank. So therefore. Dan Warner, Warner. Put this together that that takes takes. All of the things that are need to be done to to put the greenhouse properties. Greenhouse structures on on the. On the LLC property and. Make it legitimate. So that's that's why we filed the application.
All right, so maybe you could walk us through. I guess I'm trying to understand what are the original boundary lines and what's changing or what's being subdivided?
Well, that the original boundary line is the line that cuts through the greenhouses right there. Yes.
This one.
Yes.
Okay. And so. And and so. Is it? Is my understanding correct that the sort of almost triangular piece is being? Taken out of the main parcel and added to the LLC?
Yes, that's correct.
I see. So this area in here with the plot with the line that runs through the greenhouses. That's currently part of the Mary Nurse land.
That's correct.
Okay. And so you're going to reduce that parcel by redrawing the boundary line this way. And. And so this this parcel, which is non buildable, will what will? What will its journey and its life be? Will it then be combined with you joining? Why don't we just remain in this? Sort of strange, non buildable chunk?
Well, no, it'll become part of the this eighty seven acres in that whole plot. And so that that sliver. Including all the greenhouses and the and the set aside distance now will become part of the LLC property.
Okay.
They're just moving the boundary line over.
Yes, that's right.
And I think I remember, Tim, the other piece that you spoke to me on the phone about is that. This barn shown here is presently on the property. But when you redraw the boundary line, obviously that intersects with a corner of the barn and breaks side setbacks. So your it looks to me like your plan is. And I believe this is a plan versus something that has been already completed, is that you're going to. Reduce the size of the barn so that the. The corner, I guess, the north. You know, the north. Corner of the barn is no more than.
Less corner, yes.
Yeah, no fur. I guess it's still a twenty foot side setback, as I recall.
That's really not part of our decision.
That's I'm sorry, Judy.
That's their problem. It's not really part of our decision. I don't.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it's good to that they're aware of it, but I think we shouldn't. Our issue is just whether the moving the boundary line is in accord with. With our regulations, which I think it is. Tim, is any of this under APR?
Oh.
Okay. That's good. That would be a complication.
Yes, yes.
Well, are there any other? If 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 that's all there is to it, it does seem pretty straightforward. And there are other things that we need to be concerned about here, Judy?
I don't think so. Not really affecting the frontage. It's on it's on a. Way. It's just a slight, a very small movement of an existing property line.
Right. And this parcel clearly, just by cutting off a little bit of frontage, it still has. It still meets the frontage requirements. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I move. We accept it.
I second that motion. Okay, so. Motion is made and seconded, so I guess we'll do a roll call vote. Judy.
I.
Tom.
Bye.
Sarah.
Hi.
And Brant is I. So four, four out of four is all we need. Okay, so, oh. Tim and company. Is it? Have you submitted all the required hard copies along with the check to Town Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
And the Mylar? Is the Mylar there too?
Yes, the Mylar and four copies and the and the and the signed certificate and a check for fifty dollars.
Perfect.
Okay, so so we have to get down and sign the Mylar and the plans.
That's right. So I'll work with as before. What's today? I'll see if I can coordinate with Don maybe tomorrow to get down there.
Don, Don can't. Don can't go.
Oh, is that so?
Well, he's he didn't attend the meeting.
Oh.
I'm available tomorrow.
I think I should be able to get there tomorrow.
Okay, we just need him. As far as I know, minimum, just need three signatures and.
Well, four, four wouldn't hurt, you know, the more the merrier. But yeah, only needs three.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna stop sharing. All right.
What we will need is the stamp.
Oh, I know. I think I know where Don keeps the stamp in the in the town offices. There's a limited search space, so I should be able to find it. Very good. Okay. So Tim and company, I think you're you're good. I think we're done with. We're done with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your.
Hold on a sec. Sarah?
Once we're all signed, who will be notifying Tim and company that it's?
I will do that. I have Tim's email address, so as soon as we have the documents ready for you to pick up. At Town Offices, I'll email you.
Or or Amy can.
Or Amy can. Somebody, somebody in unofficial capacity will let you know. Is that good? Any other questions for us?
So I will be getting a signed copy of the Mylar?
Yes.
Okay.
Copy is a plan. You get a paper copy.
Yeah, and we'll give you, there's always the. I believe the application, the A and R application form that you submitted with the check will have, we will sign off on that. And so you'll have the Mylar and a document, signed document that says the A and R was approved.
All right, very good then. Thank you for your assistance on this matter.
Very good. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well.
Hello, people. Hi, Mary.
I'm here, but I was like nine minutes late and then my power went out, so I just I heard just about nothing of that.
All right, well, it's all caught on video and recorded for you, so.
Unanimously with minimal discussion, so.
Okay, all right. So in the interest of. We'll definitely have you back to your guest soon, Judy. So let me again, what I want to do is share on my screen. This email.
What about? What about revising the guidelines?
Oh, that's right. That was officially on the agenda, so we want to do that next. Yeah. All right. Is there anything we should screen share about that, Judy?
I sent a document. I don't think it was the. The guideline revision was fairly simplistic. I just insert one thing that occurred in the course of. This A and R application that I somehow never noticed before. Is that there's no place on the application to put either the address or the parcel number of. The lot that the A and R is being applied to. So when when I went to do the agenda, I was kind of at a loss and Amy. Found for me the plan, so so that. That worked. So I inserted a line on the main part. Just saying, please tell us where this thing is. And then on the back.
We are just trying to. Share my screen so you can all see what we're talking about.
And on the back, on the second item. I just added, in addition to the form, four copies of Form A. And the plan. To submit. One digital copy of the plan. And then I just added on the second, the next sentence that. Explaining where those paper copies were going, so I inserted the word paper. So those are the only two changes I made to the Form A.
Do you think, Judy, regarding, it it's certainly. Great, perfectly good and clear to add on the first page. The line about the address and the number of the effective process. So that's really good. Now that we've added a requirement for a digital copy, should this paragraph be? Should there be some indication of like an email address to where the digital copy should be sent? Right now, that's not specified.
Well. That's a good point. Well. Should go to the town clerk, shouldn't it? Or should it?
I was thinking it should be emailed to the town clerk rather than to the planning board.
Okay, so we can just insert to the.
So like one paper copy and blah, 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 and maybe. How about before the sentence about you will also need to bring a copy of the plan on Mylar? We could add a sentence that could say the digital. Copy should be sent by electronic.
Why not just add to the town clerk at the end of the first sentence?
Now, one paper.
The town clerk at Whately.org without too much trouble.
Well, let's see, the this sentence, Judy, that I'm highlighting just speaks to paper copies.
No.
One sentence above.
One sentence above.
And one digital copy.
To the town clerk.
So this is.
Just at the end of the first sentence, just add to the town clerk.
Okay, so you mean the first clause here?
First sentence in number two.
Yep.
And with a check for fifty dollars made out to the town of Whately.
Yep.
To the town clerk.
Yeah, but you're not going to make the check electronic.
Right.
No, but they all go to the town clerk.
I see.
Copy to the town clerk.
I'm just trying to.
All of it. All of it goes to the town clerk.
True.
Yep.
How about just? Let's try this reading. Please submit the following to the town clerk. Four copies of Form A and of the proposed plan. One digital copy of the plan. And a check for fifty dollars made out to the town of Whately.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep. All right.
All right, so that's good. I will save. You put this in our forms folder.
Yeah.
Brant, you need to take out what you typed in below, though. You typed in the digital copy should be.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Good eyes. Good catch. All right. One. One for you. Okay, so I'm saving this. Save as. Town of Whately. This in the forms. And we're going. Rev. I'm gonna just add rev two to the end of the file name, Judy, in the forms folder.
Sure.
All right, so that's Form A draft. And then you.
We need to, we need to vote that.
Okay, all right. So I will move that we accept. The revised Form A as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we'll do that by roll call. Judy.
I.
Tom.
Bye.
Sarah.
I.
Brant is I. So unanimous approval of the revision to Form A. Now, what was it else that occurred to you about this, Judy, besides just changing?
Well, this is, as I tried to say in the email, the the guidelines. Are really intended to be kind of a user friendly summary of the requirements in the subdivision regs.
Okay.
And so I went back and I looked in the subdivision regs, say, three copies. Digital. And they never were updated to have the requirement to certify that there was no APR involved. So at some point, and I don't. I think we need to also update the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
And I submitted a draft, but. In order to do to update a regulation, you need to have a public hearing. It doesn't need to go to town meeting. But it does need a public hearing. And. Somehow, the thought of incurring the advertising cost for these changes to the subdivision regs seems. A bit much. Because I think we can ask for these extra stuff, even though. The regs don't require it. I mean, I don't think we're breaking any laws or anything, but it. So I suggested that maybe the next time we hold a public hearing for something else. We could add this on the agenda and not have two sets of advertising costs.
I think that's.
And maybe in that case. You want to think about a little bit. What I did in the draft for this. Is try to, it seemed to me Paragraph A and Paragraph C in the existing regs said essentially the same thing. And were repetitive. So I tried to consolidate A. And and then insert and see the condition about the APR. Which that agriculture policy had not been voted in. Eight or whenever the subdivision regs were last booked at two thousand and three, I think. So. So I don't know whether it's worth discussing tonight or but at some point that needs to be cleaned up.
Well, this sounds like a sleeping dog that we can allow to sleep for at least another meeting cycle.
Yeah, and and maybe you just. At some point, we have to do a total review with the subdivision regs. There are a lot of problems there. This would be an easy fix. But then you have to reprint the whole thing. To to totally redo them. I mean, we we want to get some smart growth guidelines in. We want to. When Pine Plains was built, we found some. Inconsistencies. It's it's a major project and we need a grant to get some fur coat help or something. And a lot more energy than I think any of us have while we're dealing with all these marijuana things. So.
Okay.
But but anyway, just to be aware of it and, you know, this is the kind of thing, maybe we could just do. A paste amendment in in the subdivision regs. Easy to change the ones online. It's the print copies that gets.
Right.
So I would suggest next time we have a public hearing, we we make these changes too.
So we would have a public hearing for a site review, yes?
Yeah, or or a zoning change.
Right. So for example, if. Like right now, it looks like there could be an upcoming. Public hearing on a site plan review for, say, the Bretherton property. So you're saying we if we did that, we could just tag on.
Or even DM C C T, depending on what we decide.
That's right.
The.
DM C T C.
C T C.
C T C, okay.
Obviously been too long since we've had to deal with it.
Okay, so we're closed on that subject for now. We'll get Judy, you'll get the revised document over to Amy for posting on the website.
Yeah.
Perfect. On our agenda, I see that.
Mary sent around minutes, minutes ago, which I have not. Ago. I'm not expecting to do anything with them tonight, but I almost. At least now you're sure that they exist.
Okay.
And you have plenty of time to review them. I'm sorry they were so late.
Okay, so we will not review and approve minutes tonight. So. I probably can take the Bretherton matter offline because it's just a simple clarification and maybe I can get Don or Judy to.
Yeah, we should. I'd have trouble seeing the documents on on the iPad anyway.
Yeah, so but what I'd like to do is share the email we received from DM C T C. Which I skimmed, so I would benefit from just having a chance to kind of read it along with all of you more carefully. So we can get a response to them. All right, so I'm sharing this one email. So they're preparing a special permit. So this is for Seven River Road. So it looks like they want to do now indoor cultivation. And they want to hang lights in the greenhouse. So they can do indoor cultivation. And weren't there, as I recall, we did have some conditions. On Seven River Road about lights emanating from their buildings. But when we reviewed their original site plan, as I recall, Judy, there. You know, they said they weren't going to be, they're going to be doing minimal lighting. I mean, at that time, they weren't talking about sort of serious. Indoor cultivation with horticultural lighting. So that seems to be something they want to change.
Well, that's because they got expedited. They got their approval expedited if it wasn't. Indoor cultivation because supposedly it was less energy intensive. So they were applying in a different. Stream or a different category. So one issue. With the new lights is the amount of energy. I mean, we. Energy that would be involved. Like, and you know. What kind of covering they would have and things like that.
Yeah.
The other thing, I don't know what happened with the. So I think that's the only change they're proposing is now to have lights, but. But that might. That means that they will be doing. More cultivation during the winter, I would assume. Which they, you know, which is why they're doing it. So that there are, but we also had that complaint from the neighbor about light emanating. Which must have been from the nursery. I don't know what happened.
That's been resolved. I went I went back and forth with both sides. And the last I heard from Tim Smith was that it was just a transitory thing and has not has not. I mean, I've heard nothing for, the last I heard is that it hadn't happened again.
Well, it's it's a different kind of cultivation. I I would think that the the only the issues involved would be what kind of covering they plan to have. To present, prevent light pollution and how it affects their energy plan.
So this does not seem to meet the definition of a de minimis change to their site.
There's no change in the physical structure of the buildings per se, but there is a change in the operational requirements.
Yeah.
I think Tim Smith is the only a butter, but I think we would, we would need. We would certainly want more information and we would want. The ability to establish conditions and whether. It's not like we would waive the site plan review, I don't think.
Yeah.
And if we don't waive it, I think we need to have the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't waive the public hearing. At most, we would have a public meeting to decide that. As we did before.
I think, though, that if. If we don't waive the formal. If we don't waive the site plan review. We have to have a public hearing, I think.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think the answer, go ahead, Judy.
I think we want to have a site plan review.
If we're going to put conditions on lighting, we would have to do a review, have to have that in the context of a review, correct?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah. What would be the structure if we didn't have a site plan review? Difference to the butters about reviewing the lighting. Yeah.
I mean, technically, I suppose we could ask, we could, we could ask for the information and discuss it and impose conditions on the existing. Special permit, but it's it's. It's a totally different kind of marijuana processing under our bylaws, so I really think we have to go through it.
I'm just. I'm all actually just. Just so ever. Just so everyone can see what I'm looking at here, I decided to just bring up on my computer the.
Right, because we approved them for outdoor cultivation.
We did, right.
And so.
These are the site plan.
Indoor cultivation. Yeah.
They might need an, another special permit, actually.
Yeah, that, that's what they're going for.
Okay, well, if they're going for a special permit, then I think probably they need another site planner view.
Actually, and if you can see what I'm highlighting here, this was one of the conditions. On our set, approved site plan review in December, November twenty twenty. Horticultural lighting is to be used only in the nursery and should be shielded from exterior view at night, so. By adding, by doing an indoor cultivation with horticultural lighting, they would no longer be consistent with that condition. So I think that's another reason why the twenty twenty site plan review. Would no longer apply to this new plan.
Well, also, under the table of use, indoor cultivation is a totally separate use.
Okay. So I think that's it. We, is there consensus that I should write back to DM CTC and tell them that they're going to. Need to go through a regular site plan review for this.
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I will get that communication back to DM CTC. Then I think we can. Unless there's any other business for tonight, we might be able to call it a night.
Is there a quick update on the Moynihan Building Inspector letter?
I believe the select board is discussing a draft letter from the select board to the building inspector tonight at their meeting.
Oh, interesting.
There is ground broken there.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned, has a building permit been issued? Because there is work going on on the north side of the, of the border.
That I don't know. I have not, uh, we, we, I, I conveyed the letter to the building inspector that we all agreed to. I didn't get a response, not that I necessarily expected one. And I had made a note to try to call the building inspector, though I failed to do that. So I have no new information from the building inspector to share.
Well, I think maybe tomorrow we can ask for a copy of the letter that the select board is sending to the building.
Okay. I'll just, since I think that's where Hannah is, she's at the select board meeting. I'll email her.
Those of you without company could sit in on that meeting. It's. It's fairly far down the agenda.
Oh, and that's, um, is that, when does that start? At six?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That could be a fun way to.
You want to look at the revised agenda and it's inserted. Fairly far down. I would think it probably wouldn't get on, wouldn't be discussed before seven. But who knows? You never know.
Okay. Any, uh, so Tom, that, your question was about the Moynihan thing, Judy, uh, responded that. Any other business before maybe somebody makes a motion to adjourn? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't think that is one we have to vote on, right? So we are adjourned.